Good evening, everyone. I hope you all had a good Thanksgiving. And I'd like to welcome members of council, staff, and members of the public to our October 15th council meeting and call this meeting to order. I'd like to ask Mrs. Pearson for the roll call, please.
Thank you, your worship. Counselor Clark.
Present.
Counselor Hyatt.
Present.
Counselor O'Hara.
Present.
Counselor Patel.
Present.
Counselor Welsh.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Field.
Present.
Mayor Lucely.
Present.
We have a quorum, your worship.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. And at this time, I'd like you to give us the Indigenous land acknowledgement, please.
Thank you. We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, the Ottawa, and the Potawatomi peoples referred to collectively as the Anishna Bag. The town of Petroya is located on the lands associated with the Huron Treaty, number 29 of 1827. We express gratitude for the land where we live, work, and play, and we are committed to working respectfully within the land and the Indigenous peoples who've called this land home.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. At this time, I'd like to request that council declare a conflict of interest now or at the appropriate time and complete the necessary paperwork. Seeing none, we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Move by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Thank you. And that is for the council to adopt as presented the agenda, the October 15th, 2024 regular session of council.
Any questions? I'll call the vote. All those in favor? That motion is approved. We'll move on now to the consideration of the minutes of our previous meeting held on September 23rd. And I'll ask for a move in a second to put those minutes on the table for discussion. Move by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Patel. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council, the town of Petroya, to adopt as circulated minutes of the regular meeting of council held on September 23rd, 2024.
Any questions from council, errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed? That motion carries. That moves us on to a public information meeting for a zoning bylaw amendment, additional dwelling units, ADUs, on residential lots on the 23rd of September. I'll ask for a motion to put those minutes on the floor for discussion. Move by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor O'Hara. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That is for the council, the town of Petroya, to receive and file as information notes of the September 23rd, 2024 public information session held regarding a zoning bylaw amendment for additional dwelling units in the town of Petroya.
Any questions from council? Now I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll move us on to a moment of reflection. I'll ask, please, for everyone to stand. Thank you. Please be seated. That'll take us to our roundtable announcements. Tonight, we're going to start with Counselor Patel, please.
Thank you. Nothing at this time for me.
Thank you. Counselor O'Hara.
I went and seen the play on last Friday. It's excellent, anybody. You should do it. It's just one more week, I believe. It's or this week is the end, but it was excellent. Good turnout. And that's about all I have to announce.
Okay. Thank you. That'll take us now. We'll move on to Counselor Welsh, please.
Just a quick report on doors open. I'm sure the county will have official numbers out at some point. But I think it was extremely well attended in Petroya, and the town was hopping with people all day. Petroya Discovery had 90 visitors in one day. I think that's a record for us. And the quarry room had about 50 visitors. But there were people in town until like 5:00. The downtown was quite busy, and generally, it's pretty quiet by then on a Saturday.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Welsh. And I do have county council tomorrow morning, so certainly that will come forward. All right. Moving now to Deputy Mayor Field, please.
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Thank you. That'll take us to Counselor Clark.
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. And Counselor Hyatt.
Thank you. Just wanted to send a thanks to the Optimist Club for putting on a great cross-country meet for the kids last week for a lot of the public schools around the area. So, thank you.
Thank you. It was packed down there. It was a great event. I have a few items. Just bear with me. I chaired the Creative County Grant Committee on Thursday, September 26th, for an update from staff. That turned out to be a very informative meeting, and we'll be meeting later on in November to select the winners for next year. I attended the Mr. Lonnie Napper Special Recognition Night in Kamlaiki on Tuesday, October 1st, and presented a certificate and gift on behalf of the staff and council of the town of Petroya. Mr. Rick Charlebois, CEO of Treasury, and Deputy Mayor Joel Field was also in attendance, and it was a great night. And as you're probably all aware, they did name the facility after Mr. Napper, which was really nice. I attended a county council meeting on Wednesday, October 2nd, and will continue to keep council informed. I also attended the Dream Home Official Opening at 6923 Shoreside Drive on Friday, October 4th, and brought greetings on behalf of council staff. And that was a great event. If you haven't got a ticket, please get one. Half of the proceeds or money raised goes to our hospital here in Petroya and the other half in Sarnia. Even though it's all one name, we are splitting the monies. I attended the Sarnia-Lampton Arbor Week Committee that chose Petroya to plant seven large trees in recognition of our 150 years of incorporation. The trees donated and planted by the committee members in Enbridge are all located south of the new soccer fields at the YMCA. Special thanks to Mr. John de Groot, Enbridge, and members of the Arbor Committee who dug the holes and planted the trees. I'd also like to thank Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Facilities, who helped organize this event and helped plant the trees, and Mrs. Larissa Ellsworth, Director of Marketing, Arch, and Communication, for her involvement. Thank you. And that's all I have. That'll take us on to item number 10, correspondence. We have items A to G. I'll ask for council for a motion to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Move by Counselor Clark, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. First of all, any questions from council? Are you okay with all those? That's good. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council, the town of Petroya, to receive and file correspondence, items 10A through G.
Any other questions last time? Counselor Welsh.
I had a couple of questions about the seniors advisory committee in the Lampton County, but I understand they're coming to council in November on a delegation.
Correct. Yes.
I couldn't save them until then.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed? That motion carries. As far as correspondence for considered motion, there is none at this time. For delegations and presentations, we have two. We have a delegation from Rebecca Bain regarding backyard chickens, and we'd all have received copies of that information. And I'd like to ask Rebecca Bain to come forward, please. And please state your name and address for the record.
Rebecca Crawl, 288 Redwood Court, Petroya, Ontario.
Okay.
I would like to change the chicken livestock bylaw, and I request an exemption to the bylaw as that is what bylaw has asked me to do. I'm a resident of Petroya. I'm here to request an exemption to the current bylaw in order for my family to keep our chickens as that is what bylaw requires. I'm also requesting a change to the bylaw stating we cannot have chickens/livestock within the residential zones of Petroya so other families can keep theirs too. I have chickens, as many Petroya residents do. Recently, after a non-related incident, I got a complaint from bylaw, not from smell, noise, or any relevant complaint relating to chickens at all. At this point, I have had my chickens for over a year when I got the complaint. The complaint was simply, I had chickens. I'm a young family. We are raising six children under the age of eight years old, some who came to live with us through the Sarnia-Lampton Children's Aid Society. My heart is big. I think every child deserves somewhere to call a home. Unfortunately, my pockets are not as big as my heart. Raising a family with today's prices in this economy is very hard. I tried understanding how such big families were possible back not long ago, how they simply could afford to feed their children. It came down to saving money by growing and raising your own food, a time before convenience and technology ruled our world. COVID opened our eyes to many people realizing we can't always rely on the grocery stores. The rising food price is making more and more families rely on our local food banks. Our food banks can't keep up. More and more people are wanting small homesteads to provide for their families and become more self-sufficient and live a more sustainable life. But you need to be a millionaire to afford a country property when in reality, we can do so much with our small sizes right here in Petroya. Prior to looking into getting chickens, I looked through the bylaw made available online for the town of Petroya. You can look up keywords such as chickens or livestock. No bylaw came up. So, I followed a bylaw to provide regulations and prohibitions of dogs and animals in the town of Petroya. Nothing was stated about chickens there either. I followed the rules of surrounding cities and towns on their regulations, keeping my coop clean, odor-free, no roosters, and my neighbors happy. I requested from the bylaw officer to provide me the bylaw line where it states no chickens are allowed. This is a reply back I got. You would refer to R1 zoning uses. The uses does not allow for agricultural practice within the residential zones. So, I went to the zoning bylaw, 2017, updated September 2021 PDF, and searched for keywords agricultural. Nothing came up. Same with searching chickens or livestock. So, all in all, no one has been able to provide me with clear proof that there even is a bylaw regarding chickens. I think this can be a simple solution, allowing people to raise chickens for their family and hopefully their neighbors' consumptions as well. Chickens provide so much more than just healthy homegrown meat and eggs for their families. My children learn a sense of responsibility and understanding where their food comes from and allows them to learn kindness, patience, and dedication, all while aiding in their sensory development. Chickens have so many benefits, such as downsizing food waste as chickens eat scraps of nearly everything. They provide excellent compost for our gardens, endless backyard entertainment, and so much more. Our chickens have become such a fun and therapeutic part of our family, and we do not wish to get rid of them when there is no true reason not to be allowed to have them. These bylaws do not reflect the current issues families are facing. If cities are allowing chickens, I certainly think small hometowns should be able to too. It's 2024, almost 2025. It's time for change. Some simple solutions, as this is not to be complicated, maybe pay a yearly permit fee, keep your coops clean, and no roosters. On the flip side, I'm here tonight for an exemption as I'd like to maybe make another date to come up with everybody's ideas together to hear like such things as rules and enforcement, regulations such. I've started a paper petition, not an online one, which would get way more signatures and far faster, to raise support from residents who would like to support the idea of chickens in Petroya. My outcome on the first day, if I just wrote her mouth, was 50, like one per family, so 50 residents, signatures of people supporting the idea or wanting their own chickens for their own families. I've added that now the Petroya Independent wanted to be here tonight, but she's on vacation. So, there's probably going to be like an article in the newspaper for this. I'm open to any and all suggestions and questions, and if I do not know the answer, I will try my best in a timely manner to get that to you. Thank you so much for your time and consideration, your worship and all of council.
Okay. Just before you go, I just, and I'll ask Mrs. Pearson to correct me if I'm wrong, though. But our zoning bylaw, and maybe Trevor can help you with this, states that there's no livestock in an R1 zone. So, there's no... Am I correct by saying that?
I can confirm you are correct on that bylaw, but I would refer to Trevor for any detail.
Okay. Trevor, please.
Your worship. The zoning bylaw does not clearly state no chickens are permitted. That, again, the intent of the town of Petroya zoning bylaw is that we are a town which does not allow any agricultural practices. We do not have an agricultural zone because we are a town of Petroya, meaning everything within the town is within the settlement area. So, there are no agricultural practices permitted, that any livestock, cows, pigs, et cetera. So, that is why currently, as the bylaw sits, no chickens are permitted.
Thank you, Mr. Benjamins. I'll open it up to council. Does council have any questions? I do, Counselor or Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead. Through you. How many chickens do you have?
Eight. One per person in my family.
Okay. And that's all you have, is eight chickens in there?
Eight chickens, yeah.
Okay. Are they all the same type of chicken? They're just egg laying?
Well, they're all like normal standard-sized breeds, but they're all different kinds, like a Copper Murray. And like, they're all the same standard size. You can get Bantam, they're full-size hens. But yeah, eight regular chickens, all hens.
You made the comment in there that there's no noise. There's no noise from these?
They do make some chicken noises, but not anything like... I've had them for over a year, and nobody's complained. And I live on like a corner lot, so lots of people walk by, and nobody's said anything until this unrelated instance.
Yeah. I do want to caution council a little bit. I certainly don't want to set a precedent regarding livestock or farm animals coming into town. But I think, just, I'll ask Mr. Benjamins. The, to correct this, we would know, we have to go through a zoning bylaw amendment to allow for that? Would you speak to that, please?
Yes. Through you, worship. That is correct. The individual here may make an application that planning staff would more than likely propose an amendment to the entire bylaw for the town to allow obviously backyard chickens in a limited proportion. So, that is an option that this individual can pursue.
So, you could consider applying to the county for a zoning bylaw amendment. There's a cost associated with that as well. All right. Is there any other questions from council? All right. Thank you for coming to address council. And they did receive a copy of your letter that you read. They all saw that. Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll ask... I have Heidi McNabb also, if you'd like to come forward, please. Please state your name again and address.
My name is Heidi McNabb. I live at 421 Greenfield Street, right next door to the hall here. So, Mayor Lucy, council staff. Petroya has always been home to chickens. In interviews conducted by the late Charles Whip with Arnold Thompson, whose father was an oil driller, everybody had chickens. Chickens were a main part of our diet. And with Nan Rose, father was also an oil driller, lots of people had cows and chickens in town. And with Effie Anderson, whose father was also an oil man, we had chickens and a cow. Chickens are beneficial to Petroya. They reduce the amount of food waste going into our landfill site. Two significant examples of this have occurred in the last few years in Lindenberg, Belgium, and Austin, Texas. Lindenberg offered three chickens to 2,000 households in 2010 as an experiment to reduce household waste. Belgium officials report the chickens to be a huge success with organic waste cut in half. Three chickens per household times 2,000 households equals 6,000 chickens, which caused a 100,000-pound reduction in food-related waste going to their landfill site. Austin, Texas has a zero-waste goal. Forty percent of the waste going to their landfill was food-related waste. The average person produces a half a pound of food waste each day. The average chicken eats a quarter pound of food waste each day. The city of Austin, Texas, found that if 1% of their population, or only 3,000 roughly of their households, kept at least three chickens, that would divert 1 million pounds of food-related waste from their landfill. The city set up classes to educate people and offered financial incentives to people to have chickens in order to reduce landfill, sorry, in order to reduce waste going to their landfill. Like these two cities and other cities in Ontario, if Petroya were to allow chickens, they would decrease the amount of food-related waste going onto our landfill, which we know is always a concern of our community. Chickens are beneficial to Petroya as a method of generating income for the town. By regulating chickens and assembling dogs and dog tags, have chicken owners simply apply for permits to have chickens, a yearly permit. Bylaw officers could make yearly visits, check on the condition of the chickens and their habitats. Look to our neighbors, Sarnia. Sarnia previously allowed only 12 Bantam hens per household. A request was brought to Sarnia council to allow for a limited number of standard-sized chickens just this past August. A public poll was issued to the citizens of Sarnia just this past August. Seventy-three percent of the respondents were in favor to the amendment, to the bylaw at the time. So, right now, the city of Sarnia does allow six standard-sized chickens in non-agricultural or open-spaced regulated areas. Adam McDonald, who's currently the building and bylaw manager of the city of Sarnia, discussed complaints that the city has received regarding chickens from time to time. When we receive complaints, noise is generally the top issue. As a side note, when I inquired at the town as to the nature of the complaint with my three chickens, it wasn't a smell complaint, it wasn't a noise complaint, simply that they were there in my backyard. I spoke with all of my surrounding neighbors after I received the complaint. Two of my neighbors didn't even know I even had the chickens in the backyard. One neighbor is absent as they live elsewhere a good part of the year. And my other two remaining neighbors are not only completely supportive, but they still are and are interested in having chickens themselves in their backyards. As I said earlier, Petroya has always had chickens, and I ask that it continues to do so. Thank you.
Here, just hang on a second. Any questions from council? Counselor Welsh.
The comment.
Go ahead.
I actually had occasion to visit Heidi in her backyard last week and had a visit with her. And even sitting on her back deck, you really wouldn't know there were chickens there except for there's a coop.
Yep. They're quiet.
Quiet.
There's the all little cackle, but once it goes down, once the sun sets and it's dusk, like now by 6:30, they're in their coop. They're quiet. I do not have a rooster. It is not a noise issue. I mean, if I had a noise issue, I have neighbors whose dogs bark at 12, 12:30, and 5:00 in the morning, which is against the noise bylaw. But the chickens are in their coop as soon as it gets dark, so 6:00, 6:30, the girls are in their coop. They're quiet until the next morning. I let them out around 8:00, 8:30.
Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead. How many chickens do you have?
I have three. And they are enclosed. They are not free-range. They are enclosed in a coop, in a run.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, thank you for coming to address council.
Just with Jessica, that'd be perfect.
Yes. Actually, I can, I'll just forward it off my...
Great. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to agenda number 13. We have the community announcements. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Move by Deputy Mayor Fields, seconded by Counselor O'Hara. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Thank you. And that is for the council of the town of Petroya to receive as information only the October 15th, 2024 community announcements as presented.
Thank you. And Mrs. Ellsworth, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Thank you, your worship. The 29th of October, the Victoria Playhouse Petroya Foundation will be announcing a pair of free movies for kids. A little bit spooky, but not too scary. They just didn't make the cutoff. So, watch for that in the next day or so.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Ellsworth. Any other questions from council? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us now for the first opportunity for anyone from the public to address council. I'll ask first, Mrs. Pearson, do you have anyone registered?
I do not. Thank you, your worship.
Okay. Thank you. Then I'll ask anyone to come forward. Please state your name and address.
Jerry Hamilton, 287 Evergreen Trail in Petroya. I just want to speak briefly on the issue of chickens. I am fairly neutral. I do not have any problems with chickens. I just think it's going to be something you all have to look into, research, and know what you're getting yourself into with an amendment. My property backs onto Rebecca's property, so I'm in close proximity to your individual who appeared as a delegation. It's a matter of to have or not have chickens. And before you make that determination, you have to decide what is rural or village-residential. And definitely permitting an inspection is going to be to the advantage of everyone within the town limits of Petroya. There's some issues that I'd like you to take into consideration as you review this bylaw going forward. How are you going to permit it? Who will do the inspections? We know that our bylaw inspection and enforcement is done through the county. Who's going to police it? Keep in mind what quantity restrictions you want. Do you want someone to have 40 chickens in their backyard? 20 chickens in their backyard? That's a quantity issue. The rooster issue is something you should consider. The placement of the chicken coops, whether you're going to designate in a bylaw amendment setbacks from lot lines, are you going to stipulate on how big the lot has to be? If you are on a lot 50 by 60, how big of a coop are you going to allow? Whole lot different than if you're on a lot that's 100 feet frontage by 200 feet depth. So, you really have to look at lot coverage and lot size. And luckily, my neighbors, they know what they're doing as far as animal husbandry and the proper care of these birds. But there are a lot of people who have not a clue. And they're going to think, I can grab six chickens, throw them in my backyard, they're going to become free-range birds, and yahoo, I've got eggs. It's not that easy. I speak from experience. I come from the feed industry. I lived on a farm in Oakville with 55,000 units of chicken broiler quota. So, I know my chickens, and I can tell you, they deserve a good quality of life. So, you need a good chicken coop. You need a good environment, clean, with healthy food. And a novice would not know why an egg has a thin shell or why they're cracking. Are we going to have veterinarians available that are going to be able to guide these individuals through any feed issues that they might have? And when you're talking about feed, I want you to consider, if you don't get good chicken owners, if they're not storing their feed properly, it becomes a smorgasbord for rodents. It can be stored properly and not attract rodents. But it's, if it's left out free range, guess what? You're going to have animals coming into the coop wanting to have a snack. So, you have to look at that, as well as different breeds of chickens actually make different volumes of noise. The average chicken has about a 60 to 70 decibel noise level. The other thing is, in your bylaw, if you decide to amend it, take a look at where do you want the poop to go? Like, what are you doing with it? Are you putting it in the green garbage bags? Is it going to the curb? How are we recycling that straw or shavings that are in that, um, that coop? As yous are all well aware, um, the Egg Farmers of Ontario actually governed through, through the, uh, the government of Canada, a supply management system that was established back in 1972, uh, that actually takes care of eggs, poultry and dairy. And it all runs under a quota system. So one unit of egg quota, last time I checked, was $295 a unit to buy quota. You can raise chickens without quota as long as they're under a certain quantity of birds. The small quantities these people are asking for are well below what quota is necessary for. I think if yous want to be educated, I'd be reaching out to your representative for Lampton on the Egg Farmers of Ontario. He'll be able to give you a little bit more information on it. There are, to the best of my knowledge, a couple of dozen cities and towns that allow them. Last research I did, Newmarket allows three hens, Kitchener, four hens. Perry Sound, last time I looked, was six hens, no roosters. Kingston, six hens. So it's up to council to set the guidelines, um, for what you want, what you need, what you're going to allow. I think it is viable under the right circumstances as long as the bylaw is written very specifically to let people know how to handle it and how to do it right. But as far as noise, yeah, I hear the chickens over the back fence, but it actually is at times a little bit calming. So I ask council to really do some soul-searching on this issue. We know that it does generate food for, for families and, um, you just have to govern it right and police it. Well, that's all I can tell you.
Thank you. You brought up some very good points. Uh, I'll open it up to council. Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Hamilton? I just want to add, I've had experience with chickens as well. We used to have to deep beak them and we did thousands of them. Because as you know, if they see any blood, they will literally peck the chicken to death. They, but I don't know if they get into deep beaking when there's only a few, but I, I appreciate all the information you brought forward. Thank you. And again, last chance for council. Any questions? If not, thank you for coming to address council.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address council at this time? Please come forward. State your name and address, please.
This is, uh, my name is Isaiah Mushe. My address is 524 Grove Street, Petrolia, Ontario. Um, such a couple things. Chicken quota, you mentioned it before. It is fairly common in the farm industry or livestock industry to have certain amounts of birds you're, you purchase per quota. The Ontario quota is 300. You do not need to purchase quota until you have 300 birds. Meat birds, I believe, is 200. Laying hens is 300 birds. Like, that, it's open to all breeds and types of laying hens, but it's 300. I don't think anybody in their right mind in the town of Petrolia is going to even reach the 300. I think in most cases, 10 is pushing it. I myself, I have five. I was asked very politely by my wife not to mention that because no one knows yet. But it's, it's, it's coming up, so it, it doesn't bother me. I have, I have five chickens. They are all individually named. They all have their own individual personality and traits and habits that they choose to do. As far as I'm concerned, I don't list them as livestock. They're my pets. I have a dog, I have cats. They're my pets. I have pet chickens. They are not exotic. They're not on the exotic animal list. Which, as far as like, again, as Rebecca Crowell mentioned, there's nowhere in the zoning says we can't have agricultural practices. I've looked multiple times. There's nowhere that's directly states you can't have chickens. So as far as laying out fines currently, I don't think that's the right, the right course of action at the moment. Like, like as mentioned, we should sit, look into it, decide what we think is right for Petrolia, whether it's, you know, two hens, six hens, four, three, whatever the number we decide on is, we, we should come to an agreement on it. As far as, um, policing it, what, bylaw officers, the animal control. We, we pay a fair bit of tax in this community. We have bylaw officers on, as far as I know, that are not quite on call, but on staff. Why can't they police it? They police the dog tags. Recently, the town posted that they were going to do, um, like a door-to-door knocking for dog tags. Yep, for dog licenses. Why can't they, oh, you know, how many chickens do you have, or whatever, check to make sure that? As far as me, we're, and that's where animal waste goes. I have cats. I'm, I'm sure at least one of you have cats. When you scoop the litter, where do you put it? The garbage bag. You're not worried about composting, you're not worrying about putting it in the proper spot or keeping disease potentially out, even, it's, house cats generally don't have disease, but you're not worried about that. It goes in the garbage. So why would chicken waste be anything significantly different? That being said, at my house, it's composted. We have two compost bins. They're regularly turned and, and used in my gardens. And it's composted. It's not put in the garbage because it's, it's, in my opinion, a valuable resource that comes with chickens. It's not a bad thing, not necessarily a good thing, but it's part of owning animals. My dog craps, my, my cat's poo, my, my kids do too. We have, we have a very well, um, very well-built system for that. But composting is, is a great option. I don't think the meager should be of huge concern. Again, I've got five hens. I don't hear them. I've got one, her name is Chicken Nugget. She, she used to be at my place of employment. We had, um, weasels get in. Now this is out of town, so there is a lot more wildlife there is. We regularly see coyotes come up through the shop door, so it is not, they're, they're not there because of the chickens. They're there because it, that's rural area, that's where, that's where they are. She, she survived. She came home and I, I, when I looked at the bylaw, I didn't see anything saying you couldn't have chickens or you, or you could have chickens. There was nothing directly saying you couldn't. So I said, I'm going to have some chickens. And so, well, you know, she needs friends, so I got a few more. And now it's, it's come up that it is potentially according to the bylaw, I believe, I'm not sure if it was Jess Smith or someone else. I'm not sure who I directly, I directly spoke to, but I was told that it wasn't allowed because it's an agricultural practice. What's a garden? It's a small field. That's pretty agricultural, right? I'm not, I'm not saying that that should be banned. That would be ridiculous for someone not to have a garden. But where, where do we draw the line that agricultural practices? I compost, I have, I have a garden. What, what, like, if, if it's well-managed and well-taken care of, I, I don't see an issue with it. No, I'm not expecting to have, you know, four beef cattle in my backyard. That's, we all know that's again, again silly. But we, there has to be, you can't say, oh, agricultural practices, the zoning doesn't allow it, that's it. Well, you can't not define a word and then define it as you choose. I'm not picking out against anybody. I'm not sure who wrote the bylaw, who was there approved it. I don't know. I'm not concerned. But it, it can't just be blatantly, that's agricultural practice, you can do it. Is that kind of, kind of fair, I think?
All right, um, just before you go, any questions from council? If not, thank you for coming to address council.
Thanks so much.
Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to address council at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to, uh, we have a, uh, motion for administration, a report from Mrs. Mandy Pearson, Director of Legislative Services Clerk regarding Site Plan Amendment SPA completed under delegated authority in September 2024. You have a motion before you. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counselor Patel, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion before I open it up for any questions or discussion.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the clerk's report regarding Site Plan Amendment for new life assembly located at 421 Uzlovsky Street here in Petrolia.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Counselor Welsh.
State the general nature of the amendment?
Yeah, absolutely.
Mrs. Pearson, go ahead.
Yeah, um, in the report, it does mention that they're doing some revamping, so it's mostly a parking and an entrance situation. So it's, uh, no longer an in-and-out situation. You're going to have some more parking up front and, and they're cleaning up the property to, to be more reflective of their growing use in the, in the community.
Okay. Uh, Mrs. Pearson, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I don't think so.
All right. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion's carried. We'll move on to finance. We have a report from Mr. Rick Charlebois, CAO Treasurer, regarding September 2024 grant summary, grant writer service. You have a motion before you. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Uh, thank you. And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the CAO Treasurer dated the 15th of October, 2024, regarding our current grant summary report. And that council directs staff to enter into a strategic agreement with Grant Match for grant writing services as appropriate. And that council authorizes CAO Treasurer to sign the agreement with Grant Match. And that council directs staff to apply to the Community Sport and Recreation Infrastructure, Infrastructure Fund Grant Program.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. I, um, I'll ask, um, I just want to mention, I want to congratulate Mr. Charlebois once again. As you read, as part of that motion is the breakdown of all the grants he's applied for, received, the ones that are still coming, so thank you for that. Well done. Any questions from council? Counselor Hyatt.
Sorry, thank you through you. Just a question. How many grants per year are we going to use the grant writing service for? For every grant that we're applying for or just the major complicated?
That's a good question. Mr. Charlebois, would you speak to that, please?
Yes, through you, your worship. The plan would just be use it strategically when we, we need it. Right now, for this one grant that I listed in the report, we just don't have the capacity to do it. We've been busy with a whole bunch of other, uh, grants. And, and grant revenue is a very important, uh, source of revenue for municipalities. And we've, as the mayor mentioned, we've been, uh, very successful. And this will just help ensure that we keep that, uh, competitive edge going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Charlebois. A good question. I'm glad you brought that up. So it basically is upon need only, so it's not going to be for all the grants, so I'm pleased to hear that. Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Welsh.
With our procurement bylaw. Do we need to go out to tender for, to hire grant writers or is this allowed within our procurement bylaw?
Mr. Charlebois, go ahead.
To, uh, your worship, yeah, this is allowed, um, as a professional service, all our professional services. We, we don't need to do a competitive, uh, process, um, because it's that relationship with them. And Grant Match has been a company that's been around quite a while. Uh, we actually looked at them about eight years ago, but decided not to go with them at that time. And at that time, their process was a lot higher in terms of percentage that they keep. Where now it's down to 10%, uh, for under a million, 5% over a million of grant revenue. And, uh, we'd only pay if we're successful in a grant. And as, as I've mentioned many times, grants are extremely competitive and I, I've been here 12 years now. Uh, they've gotten even much more competitive and I think the main reason they've become much more competitive is that a lot more municipalities are using grant writers. So we're, and we have great staff, but we're competing with people that do this on a professional basis. And, uh, it would just keep us competitive going forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Charlebois. Counselor Welsh, you're okay with that? Okay, Counselor Hyatt, go ahead.
Uh, sorry, thank you through you. Uh, maybe this will come in another report to council at a later date, but what are we actually applying for? Like in terms of the grant, what, what project are we applying for?
For this particular, uh, this.
Yeah, go ahead.
Your worship, um, for this particular grant, um, we're applying for the next phase at the Petrolia YMCA for the external, outside amenities. So pickleball courts, um, tennis courts and a multi-purpose court. Uh, this grant program only has, well, only has $200 million, which is a provincial grant. Sounds like a lot of money, but for 444 municipalities, uh, because you can get up to 10 million. Uh, it won't last long. We're hoping they'll, well, we're hoping we'll win the first round. But if not, hoping with the elections coming, there'll be a second round, which is what they've seemed to have done the last year or two, uh, and we'll be all set for that second round.
You're okay with that, Counselor Hyatt?
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions from council? You've heard the motion. I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion's carried. That moves us on to Parks and Recreation and Facilities. We have a report from Mrs. Julie Bullock, uh, regarding the Great Bear Creek Train Contribution. There is a motion before you. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor.
Just before we move forward, if I may, there is just one correction from the Director of Facilities and Parks and Recreation.
Go ahead.
And, uh, that, sorry, that was that, um, it wasn't actually budgeted for. My error in that is that it's not budgeted for, but there is space within the budget to, to take a look after that contribution.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Bullock, and thank you, Mrs. Pearson. All right, again, I'll need a motion to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Deputy Mayor Fields, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I will ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Thank you. And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt the report of the Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities dated October 15th, 2024, regarding the Great Bear Creek Train Contribution. And that council approves staff to move forward in making the contribution to Mr. Dan Brown to finish the restoration of the train in the amount of $3,600.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. And this is, for those that remember, the, the train used to run in Bridgeview Park down on the flats and it was pretty exciting for the kids. So this is really special, I think, for the town and most of yous may have seen it on the parade or the different parades it's been in on a float, so. And there's been, this individual has donated a number of hours, uh, over and above what he's requesting here for this. So, um, I'll open it up to council. Any other questions from council? Counselor Welsh.
In addition, he's also had a lot of contributions from local businesses in the area, including one that actually bought him one of those tents to work in because he didn't have a suitable space. But he, he has contributions from probably 30 or 40 businesses for the things that he has had to purchase.
Thank you, Counselor Welsh. And I should mention too, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Charlebois, I think it was somewhere in the round of $9,000, uh, that he just based on, I think, $40 an hour that he's donated on refurbishing this thing. Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead.
Yeah, through you, um, he was at the Brigand Fair and it was a big hit there. Um, it was on a trailer. He had some fake track and fake stones and it made it look pretty, pretty impressive. You know, I think this just finishes off that project and, you know, I definitely support it. And I've told people and they're sick of hearing that I, I was one of the engineers on that train. It was one of my first jobs, so, uh, with the town. Um, and I just look forward to it being fully restored and turned back to the town. So, uh, I, I think, uh, a lot of kids can see something that, that we all saw as kids ourselves, so.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. Just a quick question. Did he have any of the cars with that float?
Uh, he had the one old car that I think he's already started.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from council? Did we read that?
We did.
Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll move us on to the next item. We have a report from Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities, regarding Sports Engine PJHL Camera Installation Agreement. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion before you on the agenda for discussion. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Patel. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt the report of the Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities dated October 15th, 2024, regarding Sports Engine and the PJHL Camera Installation Agreement. And that the council of the town of Petrolia approved the agreement as, as, uh, provided by Sports Engine Incorporated and that the clerk be authorized to enter into and execute the agreement.
Okay, any discussion from council? Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, this is at no cost to the town? Is that correct, Mrs. Pearson?
Uh, that is correct, your worship.
Thank you. Before I call the vote, Mrs. Bullock, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I think earlier this time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Again, this is the last opportunity. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. That moves us on to closed session. We have two items. Item one is Personnel, 04-2024, and that's an associate wage study. Personnel Matters About An Unidentified Individual Including Municipal Local Board Or Employees. And item number two is Property, 04-2024. Mr. Trevor Benjamin's Communication To Council Subdivision Developments is a personnel with, which is B, Personnel Matters About An Individual, Uh, Unidentified Individual Including Municipal Or Local Board Employees. I'll ask for a move in a seconder to go into camera or into closed session, please. Moved by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor O'Hara. Any discussion regarding going into camera? All those in favor? That's motion's carried. And I'll have to, we'll just wait a few minutes. I'll have to ask the individuals to step out, please, when we're going into camera. We will go back into open session after.